What color ribbon should we do for a coma?
Now what's wrong?
A stamp for the pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilman, Mayor, Honorable Mayor Ron Shaver.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Marler.
Here.
Christine Casto.
Here.
Joe Segura, Jr.
He called in and is ill this evening, but excused.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here.
First on the agenda, we have the approval of the April 19th council, regular council meeting minutes.
Yes, Your Honor, a draft copy of the April 19th minutes were provided in the meeting packet and are presented for your approval by resolution.
Has everybody had a chance to review and any changes? Entertain action.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the approval of the minutes for April 19th, 2016 city council regular meeting.
Second. I have a resolution by Christine Casto and a second by Dan Marler. All in... Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries on a unanimous vote of six to zero with Councilmember Segura absent.
Next, we have a reading of a proclamation declaring May 15th through the 20th National Police Week. The proclamation reads as follows: "To recognize National Police Week 2016 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand these problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak, against oppression and intimidation. And whereas the police department of Fort Morgan has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides the vital public service. Now therefore, I Ronald Shaver call upon the citizens of the city of Fort Morgan and upon all patriotic, civil, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15th to the 21st as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion and their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities in preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon the citizens of Fort Morgan to observe May 15th, 2016 as peace officers memorial to honor those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives and become disabled in the performance of their duties. Therefore, be it resolved that by the virtue and the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Fort Morgan, I formally declare May 15th through the 21st, 2016 as Police Week in the city of Fort Morgan and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and the communities across the nation. In witness herefore, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Fort Morgan to be affixed on this the third day of May 2016." Thanks, Karen. Thank all of your officers for what they do for this community. We greatly appreciate it.
I will. I want to thank council and the community for the support that we have. I'm very proud of our department. There are times that we struggle with staffing, but every one of my staff picks up the ball and really did the thorough job. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation on Morgan County pictorial history book co-authored by Brian Mack and Linda Midcap. Mr. Mack.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to present the museum's latest publication called Morgan County: Image of America. This was published by Arcadia Publishing, and it was about this time last year when they first contacted me to possibly put together this pictorial history about Morgan County, which heavily features Fort Morgan. We have two names on the cover, mine and Linda Midcap. Linda was unable to come tonight because she's on a trip, but this is by no means the only two people who worked on this book. Our entire museum, library staff had a hand in producing this publication, as well as community history writers and numerous volunteers. The book is available through several locations throughout the county, local shops and hardware stores. It's also available on Amazon and marketed through Arcadia Publishing. In addition to, I think it'll be a great promotional tool for our town, our museum, and our county, it's also a fundraiser for the Fort Morgan Heritage Foundation. All the proceeds from the sales of this book go into the Fort Morgan Heritage Foundation, which directly supports museum activities. I hope you enjoy it. I'm proud of it. It's selling well, so... Any questions?
Quite an undertaking.
Yeah. Yeah, there's over 200 photographs, and it's developed by chapters, kind of loosely chronological, so you get a real idea of the history.
It's easy reading.
Easy reading.
What's your favorite picture?
Probably Fort Morgan.
Good answer.
I'm attached that one to military. I searched in vain for numerous years looking for a photograph, an illustration, a painting of military Fort Morgan, and never found one, so we went about creating our own. And that's a double-page spread in here. Beyond that, I think some of the early images are just wonderful, some of the ranching pictures, the chuck-wagging pictures, and kind of the development of the town.
The flood pictures are pretty...
Yeah, everybody likes those.
Very neat.
J.C. Penney still looks the same.
What's an autographed copy worth?
Twenty-one ninety-nine.
It's priceless, and we already have it.
In the future, it may be worth a few dollars more.
Very nicely done.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Next, we have a presentation and possible action to approve an appointment of members to the ADA Ad-Hoc Advisory Committee. Mr. Boyer.
Hi, council. Welcome, or, sorry. I'm glad to be here. It's good to see y'all.
Welcome.
Thanks for having me. I'm never this early on in the agenda. All mixed up. So, a couple weeks back, a couple meetings ago, you all approved an ADA committee based on the transition plan that we're embarking upon. And this memo that I provided you are the proposed names of committee members. We looked at staff as well as outside of our city to help with this, and so the names that you have listed there, and I'll just read them off. Daniel Marler, councilmember, of course, myself, Brad Curtis, our Director of Public Works and Engineering, Mike Kirkendall, our Chief Building Official, Jeff Ames and other consultants with Meeting the Challenge, they are the group that's helping with the transition plan. Anna Blake, she's Director of Eastern Colorado Services for the Developmentally Disabled. She runs the Naresco Industries and some group homes here in town. Regilio Segura, he's Administrator at the Morgan County Department of Human Services. Diana Schmittl and Colin Mori are both with connections for independent living in Greeley. We think we have a pretty good mix of folks, and if you would approve those, we sure would appreciate it, and we'll get going on meeting as a committee.
If they have any questions for Mr. Boyer. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Your Honor, I would offer a motion to approve the possible committee members that Mr. Boyer just listed off.
Second.
I have a motion by Christine Casto, a second by Lisa Northrup. All in favor? Is that paid by... This is a motion, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next, we have a presentation and possible action on a resolution authorizing alterations to the animal shelter for the Fort Morgan Humane Society. Lieutenant Crone?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Item for discussion is Fort Morgan Humane Society has requested to build a dog run on the west side of the existing animal shelter. The city of Fort Morgan and the Fort Morgan Humane Society have a service and lease agreement for the operation of the shelter. Part of that agreement states that the Humane Society shall make no alterations in or additions to the premises, the animal shelter, without written consent of the city. Humane Society would like to build a dog run on the exterior, or, build an exterior addition to the, for the dog run on the west side of the shelter. It's approximately 16 feet wide, 30 feet long, and 6 feet in height. This is essentially going to be just ran by the Humane Society. There's not going to be just a public access, so if they have animals out there, it's a kind of a controlled access. There's no concern about any, you know, animal issues or anything like that above what typically goes on with the other outside areas of that. I would recommend that the Humane Society be allowed to construct a dog run as long as applicable permits and inspections are obtained by the planning and zoning and building departments and other departments as required or necessary. Acts required was asked that the council vote to approve the attached resolution, which was drawn up by the city attorney, authorizing alterations to the animal shelter. I also have some representatives from the animal shelters. If there's any questions that you might have to include the contractor that's going to be doing the work. Are any questions?
This is just a dog run that's going to be constructed outside from what was put forth?
Correct.
They've got their donations, and Frank is gonna do the labor for it.
No cost, no cost to the city, so I don't think there's money that they're able to get through donations.
Just one operational question. In the event that the Humane Society is not able to continue to maintain the facility, as we hope they will forever, is that going to cause any issues with the operations if the police department has to take that back over?
I wouldn't foresee it. According to the lease agreements, any alterations that they make become part of the building itself. Not to say that we would need that run for anything, but I don't see it hindering any kind of operations if the city were to take it over again.
Any other questions or comment for Lieutenant Crone? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing alterations to the animal shelter by the Fort Morgan Humane Society.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Go build a dog run. Next, we have a presentation and possible action on bids for Riverside Park paving project. Mr. Curtis.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This project comes out of the Capital Improvement Fund that was approved in the 2016 budget for repaving of the swimming parking lot and the Canfield parking lot with a budget amount of $650,000. This project generally consists of full removal of the existing pavement, restabilizing the base, and installation of hot vituinous pavement, as well as re-striping both of those areas. I mean, this pool parking lot will have a little bit different parking lot layout design that's hopefully a little bit more user-friendly, and the Canfield will get re-stripped as it was previously. We posted an invitation to bid on the city's website on April 5th, as well as added available at City Hall. We did have a mandatory pre-bid meeting, and the bid opening was on April 22nd. We did receive bids from four companies: Apex Pavement from Golden, McAtee Construction from Sterling, Martin Marietta from Greeley, and PLM from Aurora. Three of the four bidders had anticipated and have all the work completed by the end of May. In addition, staff is currently utilizing on-call contractors to prepare the sites for some of the items as we do with similar other paving projects such as repairing curb and gutter, some ADA compliance for ramps that are required, and some storm drainage work that was uncovered over at the Canfield parking lot. All that comes out of the same budget line item. Staff is requesting in this presentation to accept the bid from PLM Asphalt and Concrete in the amount of three hundred and four, three thousand, three hundred and fifty-four thousand and ten dollars, sorry, to complete the Riverside Park paving projects and authorization for the mayor to execute applicable city agreement to proceed with the projects for the paving in an amount not to exceed $400,000. PLM was the lowest bidder, and again, their schedule is the same. They were also the ones that had completed a coma. They did the paving on that project. All the companies were well-qualified to do the work, but I think from a cost standpoint and an opportunity for a company that hasn't really done work in the past, we sometimes have a hard time getting bidders, so, and with their recent work, we're selecting them. And again, the number is big, to clarify, so this is the paving portion, but now that 650, some of those other elements to get it ready that are coming from on-call contractors will still come out of this same line item.
So what's the purpose for not exceeding $400,000 when the bid is...
Typically, on our paving projects, when we're out there measuring, and especially the pool area, wasn't a straight, nice, square area, so we did a lot of kind of approximate calculations, and so what we run into sometimes because it's based off that actual tonnage and those kind of elements that we have to pay so that if there happens to be an overage on the final design, I know Josh, there's some areas along some of those speed humps that are a little bit messed up, too. So if we can get some of those smaller pieces kind of fixed, that way we don't have to come up, come back for if there's any change orders. So, a lot of times, it's when they start getting into that tonnage and we get those final tickets, we want to make sure that we're covered, that we don't have to come back with an emergency purchase, but we intend on staying within this realm of costs, so...
I was just asking, there was a little...
Yeah, it's just over the 10%, but pavings, and I know JW, sometimes, too, when we have those, when we start getting up, when you've got to find a nice, smooth edge, it tends to start getting a little bit of creep in there with that asphalt, so...
And the Canfield parking lot is the one by the ball fields?
No.
No?
I'm sorry. The Canfield parking lot's down by the three smaller fields to the...
Down past the volleyball court.
That's where the older bathroom that was put in, and there was two pieces. Last year, Apex was hired to do the golf course entryway, and then they did that little, that main where it splits into two parking lots. Then we have another small piece that was done another year, so we're just getting the rest of it all done. So the bulk of it's going to be the larger part going to the south, towards the highway. And then there's a smaller piece that's missing on that little upper, upper area closer to the shelters. So all that, and that's where we're having, we found a storm drain that started falling apart. We've got our on-call wet utility contractors out there to get that pipe just done right so we don't have another sinkhole after new pavement's put in. And then, some of the, like I say, some of the, we'll have its curb and gutter, but we've got to make sure we've got proper ADA accessibility to those bathrooms down there. There isn't really a physical ramp there, so they're building a ramp there, which we have to meet on any paving projects per the federal regulations. And then again, the approach to the poolhouse or the main entry to the pool, that ramp doesn't meet modern-day requirements, so that's getting redone as well so that that gets the right slopes in, but we're not changing. And then we're gonna repave pretty much out to where the street is, and then all that stuff will get re-stripped. Right now, it's like a double or triple one-way or something weird. Anyway, I worked, we worked on the layout and worked with Josh and Doak, and so we've got a little bit more of a two-way flow on that project, and we also want to make sure that there's good connectivity with the new ball fields, that it's aligned, that we can utilize ADA spaces at the pool that could also serve as that connectivity across the road to go up to the other bathrooms and to the ball field bathrooms. So that way, we're getting dual purpose, because I think with the configuration and modern-day regulations with ADA, right now, we've only got four spots, and I think with the new parking count, I think I'm effectively picking up six or seven more spaces, but have a better flow. But I think we need five spaces now, and so we're gonna put two by the, by the road and then two by the main entry to the pool, so it covers more of a multi-use.
Sounds perfect.
Any other questions for Mr. Curtis? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving the bid from PLM Asphalt and Concrete Incorporated in the amount of $354,000 and $10 to complete the Riverside paving projects and authorize the mayor to execute the applicable city agreements to proceed with the projects for an amount not to exceed $400,000.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call, please.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brad. Next, we have a presentation and possible action on a bids for a four-wheel-drive, three-quarter-ton bi-fuel pickup for the water distribution department.
You're not Mr. Segal.
He is Mr. Nation.
I have a whole list of things on the agenda tonight, so I played nice with Eric and told my witnesses to pick up, so...
So now we start into the Mr. Nation show.
Yes. So, good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, you have in front of you, this is the last of the vehicle purchases for any of my utility departments. This is the one that I had brought up previously when we were at meeting, I think, at the water plant. We've been wanting to put another CNG pickup into our fleet, and this was the requested vehicle that we're going after on the CNG. The reason that this one did not follow in suit with the rest of the pickup purchases is that we did go after a DOLA grant to pay for a portion of the purchase price on this. We were awarded that grant through DOLA, and so we could not award the bid until we knew we had the grant in place. So, that's why it's a little bit delayed and behind the purchase process of the other vehicles that we have. So, we had gone out to bid on this back in January, just so we could get the bids in place. The bids are still good on this. We've checked with the dealers, and so we're looking to get a bi-fuel pickup for the water department. The one thing, and I know you'll ask, is that the reason, the main reason we don't want to go with the low bid on this one is the experience that we had with the Dodges, and they put it in their, in their bid packages, that for some reason Dodge manufacturing right now is taking upwards of six months to get them out of the factory. And we feel that this one has already been delayed, you know, partially through the year, and if we go with the Dodge low bid in this case, then we're probably going to be getting the pickup later, maybe possibly at the very end of the year. The pickup we're replacing, the last time that the guys had issues with it, we actually had to have it towed into the complex, and so it's in dire need of some, you know, retirement. And so, we would like to have the council approve the bid with the second lowest bidder in this case with the Johnson Auto Plaza bid. And then along with that, you will see in your council memo that Eric is requesting a few of the add-ons to go along with this, some additional AC power outlets, spray and bed liner, and then an additional allotment to cover the warning lights and the decals and other things that we put on our service trucks. So, we're looking for council approval of expenditures not to exceed $46,000 for the purchase of a four-wheel-drive, three-quarter-ton bi-fuel Chevy 2500 with all of the bells and whistles that they're requesting.
All of our other bi-fuels are Chevrolets or GMCs also, aren't they?
Yes, they are. That's correct.
So if we've got the funding and we don't approve this, what happens?
He's like, that's funny.
You're not laughing.
I'm not laughing. Well, the other pickups are gonna have to go into the shop for some major overhaul.
We don't want to tow it through the city anymore, right?
No, I would prefer not to.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Nation? I think we covered this on the grant funding. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution for approval to accept the bid from Johnson Auto Plaza for a four-wheel-drive, three-quarter-ton bi-fuel CNG Chevrolet 2500 dual, double cab pickup in an amount not to exceed $46,000.
Second.
I didn't want to read all that other stuff.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Mr. Nation, we have action on bids for fiber-to-home network design and engineering.
Remember Goodwin, he brings a giant folder like that.
Yes. Here we go. Yeah. This is the fiber discussion, so I won't go through every single one of these times, so...
Thank you.
As we've moved forward with the fiber, we're looking at building out our fiber system, we allocated funds to do engineering and design. We put together an RFP after visiting with several different municipalities that have gone through this process and talking to some of other consultants and everything. And this has been, I will just let you know, this has been a very eye-opening and a very educational experience. The world of fiber optics is just ever-evolving, and going through this RFP process has probably been so much different than anything I've done with the city for the last three years. But I, I think every time we meet with a group of consultants, I'm not going to say that any of these was just a horrible consultant that submitted an RFP in this. We ended up with 12 companies that submitted RFPs, but it was very, very enlightening. And so, through this, and my memo spells out everything we did. We tried to narrow it down, and we had a group of us that got together after I did an initial kind of weed-out of some of the RFPs. Some of the companies kind of missed the ball, just not acknowledging things. I even had one that their company president didn't even sign the thing, so we kind of worked our way through the list. But the group of us went through seven of these and read them for not necessarily, we weren't going for necessarily, let's just decide on who the low bidder is. We wanted to look at the RFPs and actually analyze them for what they were trying to present to us, what they felt the city of Fort Morgan needed to see as we moved through this design process of a fiber optic system in this town. And with the seven of us that reviewed them, when we finally got together and sat down and looked at everything, we all had settled upon the top three candidates, which I was surprised, but there was three of them that stood out. And those three companies you'll see in your memo were a company called Newcom... And those three companies you'll see in your memo were a company called Newcom, EX Squared is how they actually call themselves, and then the Manwiler Group. And once we had settled in on those three companies, we decided it was best to go ahead and set up interviews with these companies and allow them an opportunity to come in and meet with us face-to-face. And so we'd have a better idea of what type of team they were bringing to us and what other things they might have missed in their RFPs, and it gave us opportunity to sit down with them and actually ask them questions. The interviews were just as varied as the proposals. We had commented earlier that, you know, we had guys that were all in sports jackets in one group, and then we had guys in jeans and, you know, polos in the other, and it was very interesting. But when it was all said and done, I think any of the companies that we interviewed are very capable of providing the service. But there was one group that the interview team, as we went through and talked about it more, we felt stood out for a couple of reasons. And the recommendation we're bringing to you tonight is to go with the Manwiler Telecom Consulting Group. And one of the biggest things is that Manwiler was, his group is the one that actually designed our existing fiber that we have in the ground. He's already very familiar with the system. We had a good comfort level that we're not gonna have to bring his group up to speed on where we're starting from, they're already there. He was also one of the local Colorado groups that we dealt with out of the 12, and if you look at the list in the memo, we had companies from all over the United States apply for this. So I think that was a big asset, is the fact that they're gonna spend a lot of time out here for the next four months if we proceed forward tonight. And so having somebody that has a Colorado presence is definitely, I think, an advantage in this type of situation. It'll allow them to respond to us quicker, they can be happier to meet with us easier, we won't be, you know, wondering six states away if they really, you know, remembered if that was in an alley or if it was, you know, behind the building or what. So, so I think there's some of the things that went in there, and then when it was all said and done, lo and behold, the Manwiler Group also had the lowest number that they presented for their submittal. And I think part of that is the fact that they knew that they had a familiarity with the system and they could reduce some of their hours because of that, I'm sure that had somewhat played in everything. So, so at this point, the group, Jeff was part of it, Chelsea was in there, Nelson back behind the wall, all of us were in there and, and felt that this was the direction that we, that we want to go as we move this, this big project forward. So, so tonight, I'm looking for authorization to accept the proposal from Manwiler Telecom Consulting Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $160,305, and authorize the mayor to execute all the applicable agreements received with the design. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't want to get these out for you to read unless you want to fall asleep, so.
I, I would only add that there was a lot of discussion and, and a lot of balancing and weighing between the various groups. The last three that were brought in, I think it was narrowed down to two, and, and we spent a lot of time discussing, which was good. I think we've come up with the best decision at this point, based upon a lot of different factors, and, and one of the things that Manwiler brought to the table was, as he pointed out and another group did, it seemed to be the statement of, of the day, there's only one throat to choke if something goes wrong. We don't do any subcontracting. So, there were different things that really kind of made each group stand out. Newcom had some great technology that they used to, to manage the system as they're, they're going through and, and identifying it, but in the end, we all felt that both of them could equally do the job well, and we look at price and we looked at a lot of different things. But, but I appreciate about the process is that everyone was engaged and there was a lot of discussion, a lot of very strong opinions about different things that I think resulted in a good, good outcome.
I'm impressed you guys can come up with the same three. That's usually the hardest part.
Yeah.
So, everybody did their homework and reviewed them well, I guess.
And I appreciate the due diligence, I'm, having been through proposals like that, it's, you know, it takes a lot of intestinal fortitude to, you know, to dig into those and really, you know, grasp it, and, you know, kudos to everybody that was part of the team from the beginning.
I'd like to know about the, the money a little bit, the almost a million dollars versus $160,000. That's a huge, huge spread. Were the top three, were they a little closer in?
Actually, the three we interviewed ended up being the three lowest proposals that we received for money. And that's why I said, when we reviewed those, I told everybody of the seven, I said, "Don't just go and give me the three lowest numbers." I said, "That's easy." I said, "Review them for who you think is the best company that you'll bring in for the interview." And by the time we sorted it out, that's what we came up with. The reality, the range was big. The company that gave us the big number, I have a feeling, because we know a little bit about them from some of the trade shows and stuff that myself and, and Mr. Miller have attended, they're a big company, and they work for some very large municipalities on some very large projects. And I honestly believe that if they were gonna get this job, they were gonna get paid for this job. And so, the rest of the group, when you look at the numbers, were somewhere between the $400,000 down to Manwiler's $160,000. There was a lot closer grouping in that below a half a million number than there was up towards the million.
One thing that kind of stood out to me, and maybe it did to some of the other members of the group that reviewed it, was that the three that, that I selected, that ended up being the lowest ones, seemed to have spent a little additional time understanding our system before they came in. Some of the numbers may have been skewed on the higher end with an understanding that they'd be spending that money to come in and try and understand what it is they needed to do. So that's where I kind of chalked it up, to why was there such a difference. Obviously, the one was kind of a outlier, but you can tell when you read some of these things that some of, these three that we looked at really understood the system a little bit better than the others. Some of them were talking about getting permits with the electric company, and getting permits with the, you know, various entities that would not need permits because it's a city job. I mean, we would go through and, we'd be, they would be working with the electric company, and they, they didn't really take the time to understand how the city of Fort Morgan works, and I think that their numbers were based upon the fact that they didn't have all of the knowledge and didn't seek all of the information pertinent to submitting a bid that really was closer to what actually needed to be done.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff or Brent?
Or Chelsea.
Or Chelsea.
Right.
Or Nelson.
And I do want to thank everybody involved on this. This was a lot of work, and it took all of us, and like Jeff said, we did spend a lot of time meeting and discussing about this before we brought this decision back to the council.
It was fun.
Gigabit, here we come.
That's right.
Okay, so, with that and no other questions, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the proposal from Manwiler Telecom Consulting Corporation for an amount not to exceed $160,305, an authorization for the mayor to execute the applicable city agreements to proceed with the project.
Second.
Somebody else a chance.
I have a resolution by Christine Casto and a second by Dan Marler. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Mr. Nation, present us with possible action on a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement for purchase of one share of Fort Morgan Reservoir and Irrigation.
This one's a little simpler. We're always looking to buy some additional water at times, and we're always looking to buy water in specific lateral company that we continue to have maintenance issues with. And so, this is one of those cases where we had an opportunity where Mr., Mr. Swetzig had a discussion with myself and, and Jeff about potentially wanting to sell. This is a lot like the last share we bought in the Fort Morgan system of the Caruthers, where it's kind of a, better use of a term, a bastardized share. It just floats out there, it doesn't get used, it can't be applied to the ground that it was originally intended to be irrigated on anymore, and the owners have just held on to it, trying to decide what to do with it. And so, when Jim had heard, I think, that we were looking to buy shares, he approached us and said that he'd be willing to sell, and so we were able to come to a, an agreement on the price, which I have in front of you. And right now, we're just looking for authorization to go ahead and execute the purchase agreement with James Swetzig for one share of Fort Morgan Reservoir and Irrigation Company, which includes one share of Platte Avenue Lateral Company and one share of Sargent Lateral Company.
Which we want. Any questions for Brent? If there are none, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the purchase agreement with James Swetzig for one share of the Fort Morgan Reservoir and Irrigation Company, included in one share of Platte Avenue Lateral Company and one share of the Sargent Lateral Company.
Second. I have a resolution by Christine Casto and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation on possible action on a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a Network Integration Transmission Service, a NITS agreement with MEAN.
That's, uh, we, we've come up with a lot of things that NITS could stand for, because...
Okay, Network Integration Transmission Service.
Non-interruptible Transmission Service, that's what NITS stands for.
So, does this sound like Network Integration Transmission Services?
Network Integration Transmission Services, and then there's non-interruptible, depending on what we're talking about, which, which one, but anyways, the purpose of this agreement is to clean up some things with MEAN that are kind of hanging out there with changes in the Federal Energy Regulation Commission rules. We are not allowed, and MEAN is not allowed to show, well, they're not allowed, they're required to show where every electron of electricity is shipped and how it's shipped there on their transmission systems and their transmission agreements. City of Fort Morgan owns and has its own transmission agreement that is with Western Area Power Authority, Western, and in essence, we use that capacity to get that electricity from MEAN to us. However, MEAN doesn't have any control over that. So what is showing is double capacity for shipping electricity to the city of Fort Morgan. So what we are going to do is cancel our NITS agreement with Western, and we will be counted under the NITS agreement that MEAN has with Western, and they will continue to schedule all of our power. One of the issues that they had is if we, our options were if we didn't cancel ours and kept it, we would be responsible for scheduling our own electricity, which would require us to hire a dispatcher, which would require us to do a whole lot of other things that can be done easily by MEAN. This keeps MEAN from getting in trouble with FERC when they are audited, and they can show that every electron is going through a contract that they own and that they have. And one of the things that we did, as directed by council in these negotiations, was made sure that in the event that, for whatever reason, we're no longer a member of MEAN, that whatever capacity is held on the NITS agreement that MEAN has with Western would then be available for us to go and get a new NITS agreement with Western to ensure that we would have that transmission capacity for the future. So, did I miss anything? Any questions?
So we do have the potential to get our ownership of the NITS back.
Right.
I think this, just to add, it's been a process we've been working on for like a year, year and a half or more. It's been fun.
Yeah, I've enjoyed it because several times, sitting in Jeff's office with two attorneys and then MEAN having two attorneys on a phone conference call, I was the only one that had nothing to say.
I like it. And you should get combat pay for that, probably.
But from a staff standpoint, this is something that we would like to see go forward, because we don't have the expertise to do scheduling, we don't have the expertise to do all of the FERC reporting and everything else, and we don't want to get in that position, I don't think. It's much easier since we're already paying MEAN to do these type of things, to go ahead and allow them to do it. And now we have the ability to potentially get this back if we part ways with MEAN in the future, so I think it gets us everything that we need.
No money.
Well, you wanted to work on it for a year, MEAN's been working on trying to take it for a long, long time. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Municipal Energy Agency of Nebraska concerning rights to the Network Integration Transmission Services.
A second. I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you for everything.
Thanks, Brent. Now we have public comment and audience participation for everything not on the agenda. Chelsea, you want to say something? Okay. Reports by officials and staff.
Do you have any announcements from any of the directors? Nope. Things are going pretty good. Something's coming out. Hope to keep it here.
Bids, meetings, and announcements, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's currently only one bid out, that is for sealed bids for the purchase of a wide-area mower until 2:45 PM on May 17. Under meetings, the senior center advisory board is scheduled to meet at noon on May 9 at the senior center. Planning commission is scheduled to meet at 4:30 PM on May 9 at City Hall. The golf course advisory board is scheduled to meet at 5:30 PM, May 11 at Quail Dunes. The library advisory board is scheduled to meet May 16 at 4:30 PM at the museum community room. And the next city council regular meeting will be on May 17, starting here at 4:30 with the next-to-last of the council tours. And just one announcement, the city has scheduled a ribbon cutting for the new Akoma Avenue for next Monday. We're gonna do that at 12:15, allow people who get off at noon for lunch to get over there. We're gonna do it at the west street end of Akoma Avenue near the new middle school, and I've lined up some big scissors and also contacted longtime city council member Jim Powers, who has indicated he will attend.
We may let him use the scissors.
Let him drive his truck on it first.
But, ah, there you go, that's probably more a...
Or both.
Cut and run.
Next, we will go to executive session.
So with that, we would need a motion to go into an executive session for the stated purpose.
We're not wanting to go in evidently.
That works too.
We were, we were waiting for, for the Boston.
I had to find the right paper.
All right.
For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation strategies and negotiations, instructing negotiators under CRS Section 2464024E, and for the following additional provisions for identification purposes of water purchase agreement. I'd entertain a motion.
Some move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. We will adjourn to executive session.